I'll call the zoning board of appeals, October 14th, meeting to order. This is a Zoom meeting, a virtual meeting. Your image or in voice may be recorded as part of the record. Go around for introductions. I'm Lynn Ryan. Jim?
Here.
Jim Royer. Denny Bartlett.
Yeah.
Susannah Roberts, Keith Suzie, Ginny Zuckertinsky, and Pat Jackson are all members of the board and are all present. Before we get to our first item, could we just discuss, is everybody available? Our next meeting would normally be 11:11. That's Veterans Day and it's a state holiday. We can get, it appears, Zoom access on Thursday, the 12th. Is there anyone that can't attend on Thursday, the 12th? Okay. I'll take it that we're gonna set, we can do it later, but we can set our next meeting for the 12th of November. I'll entertain a motion to open the hearing for the Capes of Berlin. So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, could you just say your name when you do? Pat Jackson moved it. And who seconded it?
Jim Royer.
Jim, okay. I'll do a roll call vote. I'm an I. Jim?
Hi.
I, Pat.
Suzie. Okay, I from Pat. Susanna?
Hi.
Keith? And Ginny.
Hi.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion to continue the hearing on the Capes of Berlin until 7:00 PM on Thursday, the 12th of November. Does someone care to make that motion? Who was that, please? Okay, Jim made the motion. Did someone second?
I'll second it.
Ginny seconded it. Okay, I'm an I. Jim?
Hi.
I, Pat.
Denny?
Hi.
Okay, Susanna?
Hi.
Got Denny's an I. Susanna? And Keith?
Yep.
Hi.
And I think, did I get you, Ginny?
No, I'm I.
Thank you. Okay, unanimous vote. The next thing, I'd like to change the, just slightly, the agenda for tonight. I'd like to talk about backlog before we get into, we'll talk about moratorium. I asked Leanne if she'd take a look at backlog and the things that may be coming our way.
Yep. We got the list.
Leanne, would you like to speak to that?
I can, if you want. We've got the C3 Berlin LLC group at 64 Bena Road. That's the retail marijuana facility. And they're going to be looking for special permit and site plan approval. We have Benedict Alberts on 157 Lyman Road, building a brand-new house. And he's gonna be looking for a special permit for an in-law apartment. Those two are definite. Carlos Lopez was given a cease and desist for operating a home-based contracting business at his home on Marlborough Road. So we suspect that he's gonna wanna come before the board for a special permit, but I'm not certain on that. Corey Musarafidi at 11 Colson Road, same thing. He was issued a cease and desist for operating a home-based contracting business without a permit. So I suspect he might be coming before the board, seeking a special permit. And then I got an email request about a hearing for their, for non-conforming law on Old Central Street by a Luis Santos. And when I told him that the board was not holding public hearings until after this state of emergency has been listed, he didn't respond and I've heard nothing more. So whether he plans on coming back to the board, I don't know.
So you only really have two then, right?
Right now, we don't.
We have two definites, although they have not filed their application, but they're pretty certain. And the other three are possibilities. Again, there's no, no applications have, for hearing have been received.
Do you have a lot number?
Okay.
On Old Central Street?
I'd have to go back and look it up, Denny. From what I remember seeing, it just said lot on Old Central Street.
Okay.
Okay, the reason I wanted her to mention that is we have, although neither of them have filed, the in-law apartment, I believe that they are not as anxious to do the hearing as they once were, only because we worked it out with the building inspector, that they could actually build the building, they could build the bedroom, the bathroom, sitting room. They just couldn't cross the threshold that the building inspector would consider it an in-law apartment. The C3 at Bena Door, it was expected that they were gonna take quite a while to do the state process, which they could do while we were pending. But that took two weeks. So I guess they're ready for us to have a hearing for them. I tend to think that that might be a rather large hearing. I met with Margaret and Chris Keith this afternoon at the request of Margaret. And she was talking about the moratorium and asking if there's something, way that we could be holding meetings. She's very understanding and I guess they felt, well, at least Chris felt that C3 would be very amenable to what we're doing as far as having this moratorium. But they were looking to see if we could maybe hold it in the town hall and maybe hold it in two rooms. But right now, we can't have any more than 25 people attend. The state had started at 25. For a short period of time, they went up to 50 people that could congregate. They're back down to 25. I explained to them that the board's concern is that people can't really see some of these maps. They can't see the changes that are being made. And that we have had neighbor input that concerns were expressed to us that they can't participate in an active way. And I told her I would mention it to you folks. Right now, there doesn't seem to be a way. I said that maybe I could write a note to Amy if they up it to 50. Maybe we could take the chance. But as I told you before, if any more than 50 show up at the meeting, we have to close it down abruptly. Anyone have any thoughts? Anyone feel that we need to rush with this, or how do we feel?
I think if you do it for one, you should do it for all. Fair. And I haven't, and myself, I'm not gonna go into a building until it's taken care of. And if we get 51 people, we have to cancel the whole thing. I'm sorry, I think they can wait.
Anyone have an opposite opinion? Okay, well, that's pretty much the opinion I expressed, but I told them I would mention it to you. They're gonna talk to C3 and explain our position. The next thing, let's see, we talked about the backlog and the special town meeting. Leanne, I just sent it to you because I just got it this afternoon myself. Did you have a chance to send out to the folks?
I did.
The articles?
Yes, I did. I don't know if everybody's checked their email, but I did send it out.
It was late this afternoon, 'cause I just got it this afternoon.
I sent it out, it was after.
I had, I had asked. In fact, let's see how tech savvy you really are, Mr. Royer. Can you put it up on your screen and share your screen with us?
Can I do what?
There's an email that you've got that contains a list of zoning articles that the planning board is planning to put on the town meeting warrant. Again, I don't know that they're in their finalized form, but I told them I would like to see it because many of them are ones in which we have an interest. Can you bring up your email and share your screen with us?
I don't think so. I think Leanne.
We're really putting it to the test.
Sharing screens.
What, so?
I'm sorry.
I said, I think we disabled screen sharing for everyone except the host.
Oh, and I don't have that ability. Let me, I don't even have that option.
Hold on, let's see if I can.
That's.
Okay, so we move to Keith.
I can't, I can't. Jim, you don't have share screen button in your center at the bottom? Looks like you have the ability to do it.
I, I have it at the bottom of mine, but I thought we disabled that way back in the beginning when we disabled chat.
I've got it too.
No, you should be able to screen share.
Yeah, I can't do it. I don't, I'm not on my computer, on my wife's computer. But Jim, if you open up that document, then you can hit that share button and then it'll ask you what window to share and you just click on that document, you'll be able to see it.
I've got it up. Do you want me to do it?
Yeah, yeah, that'll be.
Yeah.
All right. I don't know how to undo it if I screw up, though.
We're gonna see a bunch of cats if things go bad here.
All right, here we go. This, okay. Did that work?
Got it, it's coming up.
All right.
There it is.
Oops.
All right.
Oh, that's excellent. So you can see that there are five, and I'll tell you about a six article that are going to be on the warrant in December. The first one has to do with home-based contracting business. And it just basically says the business must be owned and not read by a resident of the dwelling. See if the town, the table of home-based contracting business. And they're talking about making the gross vehicular weight as registered with the registry of motor vehicles. And then they wanna amend the zoning bylaws for in-law apartments, maximum size by adding, including any proposed addition or modification after total floor area. To be quite honest, excuse me, that's not something we asked for. So I'm not sure exactly what is. And then the next one is, this is about a common driveway. And this would add any change or structural addition or modification beyond general maintenance in the location with length, height, or material composition of a common driveway affecting its accessibility by users or emergency vehicles or redirecting water runoff must be approved by the Berlin Planning Board. If, at the discretion of the planning board, it is determined that the modification is substantial, a public hearing will be required. And then the next one is not directly at us, but it's limiting the number of retail medical marijuana establishments. Anybody wanna discuss any of the proposed bylaws?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think number one is troublesome in that by saying resident, you're opening yourself up to a renter being able to have a home contracting business. And that was the problem we had with Squash's old place. And there was two different people, 'cause it was a two-family. Both of them had home-based contracting businesses. None of them were compliant. It turned into a contractor yard. And the building inspector had to go after the owner of the building and could not go after the renters. So by just saying resident and not owner, it's gonna lead to a bunch of trouble like we had before.
What we had given him did say owner, at least 50% owner of the property. I agree with you. How does the rest of you feel?
Totally agree with Susan.
I do also.
I agree.
Okay, so I think consensus is that we should suggest, and I'll write a note to Tim and just tell him what we had to say, but there will be a hearing. Anything else, Susanna?
Not on that, but I was hoping to see the addition of a definition in the glossary of the bylaws that described a contractor yard or further described a home contracting business, because those are kind of vague.
To be quite honest with you, we lucked out. They've put several things off until the spring. They wanted to keep the December meeting at a minimum. So the fact that four of the five have to do with things that are concerning to us, I think is amazing. But yes, I think we should tell them that we're still looking for definitions. Anything else, Susanna?
No, everything else looked good. I especially liked number four.
Yeah.
Yes, I, it went in pretty much the way I wrote it. Does it, does anybody have any other comments? Questions?
I question number two. As you and I discussed previously, you can have a vehicle that has a weight rating and then register it with the RMV at a different weight rating. So for example, I could have a truck that's rated for 26,000 pounds and I could go to RMV and have it registered at 20,000 pounds. So it's, I'm not sure that we wanna use what's registered with the RMV or if we wanna use the maximum weight rating that is stamped or stickered in the vehicle somewhere.
Okay, so if we were to say something along the lines or suggest that it be as registered with the RMV or the greater of weights registered with the RMV or stamped on the vehicle by the manufacturer.
Yeah, I don't know if the, I don't know if whatever's registered with the RMV really means much. Personally, I would rather just see it being the gross vehicle weight rating as assigned by the manufacturer of the specific vehicle.
Okay. To best of my knowledge, whatever is on those stickers, put it placed in the vehicle is what you have to register it as. You can't say.
I know you don't have to do that with trailers. 'Cause I registered, I registered a 14,000-pound trailer at 7,000 pounds. Why did you do that, Jim? Two reasons. One, if I go over 10,000 pounds, then it's considered a commercial trailer. So I run into a lot of issues with that. I'm just kidding. I can confirm what Jim is saying. I do know trailers, they ask, when you register it, they ask the person registering what you wanna declare, which can be anything. So I agree, the vehicle, what's stamped on the vehicle makes more sense, at least in terms of trailers. I don't know if, for trucks, you can change that vehicle weight, but. Well, my understanding with trucks was that you could go in there, you couldn't increase the registered weight higher than the manufacturer's rating, but you could have it registered at a lower rate. Sure, I guess that makes sense, right? If you're gonna do like you wanted to do and save on insurance, then. Yeah.
Wanna add words that say as registered or maximum per the manufacturer, whichever is greater?
I mean, you could do that, but it feels redundant. If we just say as, as stamped by the manufacturer, then that will assume will be the highest, right? Yeah, if, even if the RMV won't let you change it. If you said as, as rated by the manufacturer, then you would, I, you know, supposedly, the RMV would have the same number anyway. Yeah, I just don't know.
Could I ask one of you to do some homework?
Sure work.
I volunteer, Jim.
And could you check into what the weight at the RMV is, particularly for trucks?
Yep.
Because I, I'm not sure that, I mean, trailers can be a problem, I understand. But I think a trailer shouldn't haul anything more than what the truck is registered for. So if we can solve the problem of the truck, maybe we inadvertently solve both problems. So who's gonna do this checking?
I am, I am.
Okay, Jim, thank you. Do you wanna get back to me before, I'm gonna write a note to Tim and just tell him, you know, any concerns we have with this.
Yeah, I'll get something to you by the end of the week.
Okay, you're good. Everybody happy with us doing that?
Yeah, I guess the only other thing I would say, Jim, to play devil's advocate, is I don't know how enforcement, you know, what goes to the registry, gets on the registration. So that makes it a whole lot easier to enforce it, right? You know, let me see your registration versus every manufacturer's gonna have a different stamp somewhere. Well, I, I agree, but I think, you know, our zoning enforcement officer is gonna be the one enforcing that. And if he shows up at somebody's house and says, he can say either, "Show me your vehicle registration" or "Show me your sticker in your door sill of your truck." Either way, he's gonna have to look at something. Okay.
Well, there's also one thing I'm thinking of is there are a lot of homemade trailers on the road without a manufacturer weight, GVW. We happen to have one at our kennel. That's what made me think of it. So trailers are, can be a little tricky. But I've, I've never heard of one being, with a manufacturer's plate, being registered for less. I mean, our insurance company's very, very keen on always having the GVW for trailers or any tow vehicle, truck. So that's just, just a little two cents from the peanut gallery.
Okay, well, why don't you?
I just re-registered two of my trailers. One was a homemade one and it's gross weight of 1,000 pounds. And the other one is classified as a utility trailer. And they have it, they put the number on it of 3,000 pounds, 'cause that's apparently what the vehicle identification number called for.
Well, why don't we let Jim do some research? And he can ask the registry, what do you do if someone comes in with a trailer that is self-built? And they can tell us if in fact they would.
Rate it?
Take them at their word. And, and whether they would rate it or whether they would take the word of the person registering the trailer. And if they would take the word of the person registering the trailer, then we should probably put an either/or so that we could use one or the other, whichever is greater. But maybe we can work that out before I send a note to Tim. There is gonna be another article, and it's mentioned in the note that you got sent. It's gonna have to do with River Bridge. I attended part of the planning board meeting last night. And I know Leanne was clerking for them. They're coming forward with a plan down there. You know where the current apartments are. And there's some kind of a restaurant or store or something. And then in front of it, and there's also the daycare. In between the daycare and that rotary, they wanna put in, the plan they showed had 29 townhouses. They won't be under, they won't be under body B or they won't be committed to having a certain percentage of them. You might wanna listen, and maybe Leanne could send us the link to where their meeting is. You might wanna listen to the meeting because Mr. Steny was there. And he was also saying that he's proponing a couple of things that he wants to do. One is a drive-through. And I think, yeah, what the other one was, let's see, was it drive-through? And.
It was drive-through for both the Village Cafe and the Dunkin' Donuts at the gas station. But they said that they would probably wait till.
Then there was something else.
Spring, spring meeting for that.
Right.
Yeah, I don't recall.
He expressed some financial difficulty. In fact, $100,000 is due to the town this fall. And he's not gonna be able to make that payment. But his intent is to sell off this 29 townhouses. He said between 25 and 30, but the plan they showed had 29. He's gonna sell them off. And when he sells that, he could work with the town to give, accelerate and give them present value for some of the money that's due to the town as mitigation. So I, I encourage you, if you would, to listen to Mr. Steny at that meeting. You can also get a feel of the way the planning board is going. I'm not sure, maybe Leanne heard, but this is going to be a citizen's petition. It's not gonna be proposed by the planning board. Personally, I think the planning board has to take and make an opinion on it. I think they said they need 100 signatures, Leanne, of residents.
Correct, that's what Eloise stated.
But of course, the 99 people. Okay. So they're gonna try to get 100 signatures to put this on the warrant.
And they're looking to hold a public hearing.
They're looking for what?
They're looking to hold a public hearing with the planning board on November 17th at 8:00 PM. 'Cause they need to do that and before they can get placed on the warrant.
Okay. So if you have a chance, I know we, the, the meeting was recorded and it's probably someplace. So if you could send the link to the board, that would be helpful.
If you go to the town's website, right on the front page, if you go to the social media tab, it usually has a link to YouTube with all the recent meetings. But I'll try to get a direct link.
Thank you. Thank you.
Didn't they just petition at the last? Didn't they ask for a waiver for some other taxes they owed at the last meeting?
There was some comment there that what's there looks nothing like what was originally proposed, but-
Right, but they, they owed, they owed us money last town meeting, and they asked for an abatement in ex, in exchange for a piece of land or something.
I don't remember that, but you're probably right. The thought is if they can get permission for these 29 or whatever, between 25 and 30 units, and could sell that, it's called law and I, and I believe if they could sell that to someone to build, then they would have the money to be able to meet some of their obligations to the community.
Also, there's no kind of timeframe. You can bring up a drive-through window every single meeting for the same drive-through. There isn't a time that you can say, okay, number three, you're out, you can't do it again? So this is just gonna go on and on and on until they finally get their drive-throughs, right?
Probably.
Yeah.
One of my concerns is setting a precedent. How do you say yes to some and no to others? One of their arguments was that they couldn't get a restaurant because they couldn't get a drive-through. And my comment to that was that we, the type of restaurant we want doesn't usually have a drive-through. The restaurant you would be, you would be attracting on McDonald's and Wendy's and that type of thing, and what we were looking for. They also said something about a, in front of the hotel would be a great place in their planning, that that would be a place for a restaurant. So we can discuss this, because this is something that won't be coming before us as a board. I don't want you to think we're going off on a tangent here, but-
Why can't they just ban drive-through windows like they have in Sudbury and Southborough?
It is banned.
Yeah. So why can you keep on bringing it back up?
Well, you can, you can ask to change the bylaw every town meeting if you want to, but, you know, they, it's a zoning thing, so I, my understanding is they've got to get two-thirds of the vote to change the zoning bylaw.
My understanding is it depends on how the planning board feels about it, but I think you get a sense for that if you listen to the YouTube recording of the meeting. Okay, then. We've set our-
You want me to stop sharing my screen yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can stop.
Thank you.
We need to approve minutes.
Yep. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our last meeting.
Seconded.
Who, who moved? Denny?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
And Jim seconded it.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion on the minutes? If not, I'll take a roll call vote. I'm an I. Jim?
Aye.
Denny?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
He?
Aye.
Jenny?
Yeah, um, aye.
Okay, and Pat said aye, and Jenny said aye.
Yeah.
Okay. You all know that the town meeting is gonna be held at the town hall, correct?
Didn't know that.
They're gonna set up two rooms. One will have the actual participants, presenters or whatever, and this selectmen, et cetera. The other room will have a video feed and, and microphone.
That's only allowing, what, 50 people?
No, there's an order 46, and the order 46 exempts legislative bodies, in other words, bodies that make laws, and it exempts schools. So schools can have people congregate in more than 50. And if you are a law group, such as town meeting, such as city council, you are exempt from the restriction. I still don't know, you know, you still have to do the distancing and stuff, and I don't know if 300 people show up, what they're gonna do, but maybe 300 people won't. Okay, we set our next meeting for 11:12 on a Thursday. You folks say that you're available. Does anybody else have anything that they'd like the board to discuss?
Yes, if we could.
Sure.
Okay. As fence viewer, I got a call from someone on Parker Road, which is part of Green Acres, and there was a dispute about a fence. And I, he, I asked him, I said, well, basically, if it's on your property, it's yours, and if it's on his property, it's his. He says, oh, it's definitely on his property. So then he started to talk about the homeowners association and the bylaws, or the, the easements and all this other stuff. And I said, well, you need to talk to your homeowners association board and find out how they handle dispute resolution. And his answer was that the administrator told him to go to the town. So this is Green Acres, and you can imagine with the easements that we have coming up for Capes of Berlin, if there's no dispute resolution in the homeowners association documents for that one, we're gonna be faced with a whole bunch of disputes coming to us.
Might I suggest, rather than discussing it, that when we do open the hearing and are able to take action on the body B that's in front of us, that you bring that to the forefront and perhaps ask the petitioner what we can do to resolve those types of issues.
Okay, sounds good.
Anyone have anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No.
Did you get the maker and second, Leanne?
I got the maker, I didn't get the second.
I'll second.
Okay, I'm an aye.
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 Aye.